Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. This evening we have a special guest who's going to sing the National Anthem. Could I ask Spencer Joy Capelazzo to come forward, please? would often sit and hum along to music on the radio. On lawn drives and even short drives Spencer would hum and tap to the music that played on the radio. And Spencer especially liked her parents' musical choices such as The Beatles and Queen. Spencer has been taking voice lessons from Sandra Mason, our respected voice coach from Niagara Falls since approximately 2003. She has performed and plays well at local Kiwanis Voice competitions, and she also plays the guitar. In addition to her musical interests Spencer is on her way to completing her black belt in karate. Currently Spencer and her sister Tia have blue belts from the Martial Arts Centre in Niagara Falls. And this evening Spencer is going to grace us with her rendition of the National Anthem. Thank you.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our hominid land. True patriot love in all our sons come out. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, a true master strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[134.44][134.44](Applause)
Spencer, on behalf of the members of council this evening, thank you very much for joining us this evening. I appreciate your rendition. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like me Colin, councillor Einoni, for prayer, please.
If we could, I'll brow our heads for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us.
Member of the council, the first order of business this evening is the adoption of the council minutes of November 12, 2007. Motion by councillor Peter Angelo to accept the same. Second by councillor Maves. Are there any changes or deletions? Having seen none, all those in favor of the adoption? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. This time I'll ask for any disclosures of a beginning area interest by any members of council. Councillor Carrion?
Your worship, part of the meeting tonight, council met in closed session to discuss something about development charges. I excuse myself from the meeting and put in a conflict on that portion.
Okay. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I'll clarify, similar conflict on the development charges.
Councillor Wing?
Yes, report CD 2007-19 and bylaw 2007-174, Union Marsh drainage matter. This affects the Niagara Parks Commission lands. My spouse is a Niagara Parks employee.
Thank you. Councillor Einoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The same conflict councillor Carrion and councillor Thompson had. And I did have two conflicts in the last council meeting that I was not here at, and I'm sorry, I forgot to bring the numbers, but I will have staff do that. But I did have two prior conflicts on the last accounts.
Yeah, thank you. This evening I have some deputations to present to council, and I'd like to welcome from Canada Canadian Blood Services, the regional director Judy Compton, along with Phil Matson from our own records election coordinator, who will make a presentation on the Partners for Life initiative currently being undertaken by staff. And I believe that Diana Continenza will be speaking as well. No, she's not speaking? I'm sorry. All right, so then I'm going to ask Phil, and is this Judy? Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Salsi, members of council. For the sake of those watching at home or in the gallery tonight, my name is Bill Matson, and I'm an employee here at City Hall in Clerk's Office. I'm here tonight just to talk a little bit about a program that we're launching with the employees here at the city of Niagara Falls called Partners for Life. And first off, I'm going to have Judy Compton, who's the regional director for Canadian Blood Services, speak to you and give you a little bit of a background information on the Partners for Life program as it relates to Canadian Blood Services. And then I'll be speaking as well, just to give you some information on how we, the employees here at the city of Niagara Falls, are going to partake in this program. Judy?
Thanks, Bill. Good evening. My name is Judy Compton. I'm the director of donor and clinic services for Canadian Blood Services here in Southern Ontario. We are the largest blood collection center in the country, and we collect almost 20% of Canada's blood requirements. I'm here tonight to thank Mayor Ted Salsi and the city council of Niagara Falls, and in particular one individual, Mr. Bill Matson, who is our Partners for Life champion. The city of Niagara Falls does have the power to save lives. Partners for Life is a nationwide program that is designed for corporate and community organizations that are interested in making an invaluable contribution by sharing their health and vitality with others. When an organization joins Partners for Life, everyone works together to make a set number of blood donations per year. These donations have a direct impact on those in need: patients being treated for cancer, during surgery, or after a serious accident. This year, approximately 50% of Canadians will need blood for themselves or a loved one. And it could be easily someone in your office. Your donation could help save the life of a coworker's best friend, a child, or a spouse. When the city of Niagara Falls made a commitment to support Canadian Blood Services, they really made a commitment to help their community. Donating blood is a great way to raise employee morale and promote team building within the office. But don't take our word for it, just ask some of the city employees that participate in our Partners for Life program. As well, recent Ipsos Read polling shows that 71% of Canadians strongly agree that corporations who participate in blood donor clinics are doing a good thing. Canadian Blood Services is a national not-for-profit charity committed to keeping all Canadians safe and healthy. It is our job to ensure that safe blood and blood products are available to hospitals across the country when and where they need them. We count on public support, which is why we maintain effective relationships with our strongest supporters, and publicly recognize their generosity and commitment. The blood system belongs to all of you, and we are all in the business of saving lives. During the holiday season, blood collections can sometimes be very challenging, and we are very pleased that the city of Niagara Falls are hosting two upcoming donor clinics over the holiday season period. One on Saturday, December 15th, at St. Andrews Church on Morrison Street, and one on Monday, December 4th, which is typically a very challenging day to collect blood, at the Optimus Club on Dorchester Road. Now, just think of the difference that you could make if you brought someone with you the next time you donated blood. What if you brought two people, or five people, or 20, or 50? Everyone here tonight, and many of those who are here at home, have the power to make a significant difference in the lives of others, and that is the beauty of giving blood. And I brought a certificate of membership to present tonight to Mayor Salsi and the city council, and to Phil Matson, and I do want to thank you for your continuing support. It is a great thing that you're doing, and we really do appreciate being able to partner with the city of Niagara Falls.
Thank you very much, Judy. Bill?
Just before Judy presents that certificate, I just thought I'd give a few words as to the involvement of the city staff in the Partners for Life program. First of all, just to give a little bit of background, Marcia McDonald, who is our recruitment coordinator for Canadian Blood Services, suggested that perhaps I give a little spiel on why it is that I donate. A lot of times people have a dramatic story, you know, a family member has been in need of blood and made donations. And in my case, there is no drama. My father was a regular blood donor, and I used to go along and take along with him when I was a small child. His father was a regular donator as well, and on occasion, I even bring my boys along with me when I go to donate. And I've already got a commitment from them saying that when they're 17 years old, they're going to be out there donating as well. I've got Spencer and Tyler sitting over there, that are future blood donators. One time, though, it really did hit home, and the story's been well documented. Corey Garok and Rob LaPonce have done a great job in helping promote blood donor clinics. But on my 39th donation, I remember making, going to the clinic, and somebody telling me that, "Oh, great, we have an O-negative blood donor here. You see that guy sitting over there? He's waiting to take blood from the clinic up to the Neo-Natal Hospital McMaster in Hamilton." And that's where both my boys were born, at that hospital, and they both spent a week there. And I left there that day thinking, "That could have been one of my boys that needed blood." So, you know, that's the closest that it's really hit home to me for donating blood. And, you know, that kind of inspired me to go out there and give on a regular basis. During my 50th donation that I made earlier this year, I was contacted by Canadian Blood Services to ask if we would host a donation party and try and get some first-time donors to come out and donate blood. In asking fellow employees around the city, we did get a great response and got a lot of people coming out for a first time, but I was amazed at the number of people already on staff who are regular donors. When telling Marcia about that, or Marcia, sorry, she suggested the Partners for Life program, where we could get some of those people who are already making a difference in the community to go out and just take that extra step, and perhaps go as a group and encourage others that perhaps, you know, aren't that comfortable about donating that, or if I can go along with a coworker, then perhaps just make the process a little bit easier. So, it was great to hear that through John McDonald, our CAO, that the corporation was willing to lend their support, and recognizing that there is a need within the community, and that the employees here under the corporation sitting there in Niagara Falls can get together and make that difference. So what we've done is we've had 18 people, employees, so far, that have signed up as part of the Partners for Life program. All of them have given me a personal goal of how many donations they think they can make in 2008, and collectively, we've added that together and come up with a corporate goal of 60 donations for 2008 that we're going to make as employees of the city of Niagara Falls. So, Judy, perhaps we could just present this certificate? If Mayor Salsi, you can come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Salsi. And Bill, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the members of council for coordinating our staff and city hall in this work, all effort, and Judy, thank you for your efforts in organizing this as well. So, I would just like to thank all the city hall. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.[811.12][811.12](Applause) Councillor Einoni, do you have a question or a comment?
I just had a question for the presenter. Maybe you can answer me. Is there somebody, is there a criteria who can't give blood?
It's quite extensive criteria, and if you are interested in finding out what a clinical free number, you can call, which is 1-889-882-donate. And we have a national contact center, and they can answer any medical questions that you may have. And you can also book an appointment at that time. Or we have a website, www.blood.ca, that has quite a bit of information on donation criteria and rules there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy. The next deputation, members of council, is a deputation from the Heart and Stroke Foundation. This evening we have Diana Continenza here, who'll be speaking on behalf of the Heart and Stroke Foundation, and also she'll be asking for a flag raising and also proclaim February as Heart and Stroke Month in the city of Niagara Falls. So, now I can welcome Diana. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship and council. My name is Diana Continenza, and I am with the Niagara Heart and Stroke Foundation. Heart disease and stroke is still the number one cause of death in Canada. But what does that statistic mean to Niagara Falls? Let me tell you. It means that every day in our area, 12 people are hospitalized because of heart disease. Another three people will be hospitalized every day because of stroke. Right now, in Niagara Falls, as I speak to you, chances are somebody is being rushed to hospital with a heart attack or stroke. Maybe it's someone you know. It could be a neighbor, perhaps. Maybe it's an employee, employee or employer, or heaven forbid, a member of your family. It might be a total stranger. But whoever it is in that emergency vehicle, or in that hospital emergency room, or in the recovery unit, the reality behind the statistics is heartbreaking. When I say heartbreaking, I do not mean to be clever. There just isn't any other way of describing it. The financial costs of treating those cardiovascular diseases are almost beyond calculation. They are a constant burden on our healthcare system. But I want today to focus for a moment on the other costs: the emotional costs, the human costs. When someone has a heart attack or stroke, the effect is like a rock being thrown into a lake. There is the initial splash, that's the heart attack or stroke, and then there is the ripple effect. The ripple effect happens when the shock of the event radiates outwards, hitting families, caregivers, communities, employers. It can be the death of a thousand dreams and hopes. 12 heart attacks, three strokes, every day in our area. What are we to do? How can we minimize the damage? How can we prevent those 15 hospital emergencies every day? What can we do to relieve the burden on Niagara Falls? Fortunately, I can tell you right now that the gloomy statistics do not tell the whole story. There's another side to things. For example, over the last 10 years, the death rates from cardiovascular disease have decreased by 30%, and over the 50 years the foundation has been in existence, the death rate has decreased by 70%. So there is a lot we can do. There is a lot that we are doing. Already, the Heart and Stroke Foundation has significantly reduced the burden of heart disease and stroke. We have been able to do that because the Heart and Stroke Foundation funds nearly 450 researchers and teams in Ontario. It's a commitment to research that stretches back over 50 years. Let me give you an example of what our researchers can do when they put their heart into this tradition. In 1950, researchers from the Heart and Stroke Foundation of Ontario helped develop the world's first cardiac casemaker to regulate slow heartbeats. Then later in the decade, foundational researchers were involved in research that led to the world's first internal cardiac defibrillator. These advances enabled thousands to live normal lives who otherwise for the mercy of irregular heartbeats. You probably know someone who has one of these devices. And I'm sure every hockey fan will remember Yuri Fischer, the NHL player, who went into sudden cardiac arrest on the Detroit Red Wing bench in 2005, and was revived with an onsite external automated defibrillator. Let me say that the Heart and Stroke Foundation is campaigning to have defibrillators in every public space in Ontario to deal with sudden cardiac arrest. In fact, the foundation placed units recently at Oaks Park, Optimus Park, the Department Parks and Recreation Community Events, and the Niagara Parks Commission Queen Victoria Complex. Our goal is to find a corporate or community donor to fund units in Club Italia, Chippewa Lions Hall, Niagara Falls Lions Hall, Stanford Center Lions Hall, Out of the Cold, Nova House Women's Play Shelter, Niagara Falls Curling Club, and Niagara Falls Hydro. The foundation wants these AEDs to be as common as fire extinguishers, in public places, and is working with the provincial government to set up the infrastructure and fund the units across Ontario. That's the Heart and Stroke Foundation's prediction: a history of research leading to effective diagnosis and effective treatment. Now let me tell you about our work in the area of stroke. Ontario developed the first Ontario stroke system, a world-first treatment network that delivers patients within a three-hour timeframe from onset of symptoms to specialized treatment units. This is making a huge difference in improved treatment outcomes in the province. Stroke rehabilitation is another major area of innovation for the foundation. The Heart and Stroke Foundation Center for Stroke Recovery is actually teaching the brain to redirect functions, such as hand movements from stroke-damaged areas to undamaged areas. This has major implications for the future of stroke rehabilitation. There is also a social dimension to foundation research. We are actively involved in the health concerns of communities in Ontario, including Niagara Falls. We are supporting advocates who believe in the right of schoolchildren to get more playtime in the curriculum, and we are getting kids active through Jump Rope for Heart. We know that kids who are brought up on healthy food and lots of playtime develop heart-healthy habits that last a lifetime. This is important because so many risk factors for heart disease and stroke are the result of unhealthy lifestyle choices. Obesity, high blood pressure, and diabetes are deadly milestones leading to stroke and heart disease. I'm sure that by now you are all aware of our health check program with over 1,000 labels in your supermarket. Taking this one step further, the Heart and Stroke Foundation is advocating at the federal level to take trans fats out of our food supply. Talk about influencing change. An emerging research priority for the foundation are the medical cardiovascular consequence of urban problems such as pedestrian unfriendly suburbs. Our landmark report card on the matter established conclusively that it's healthier to live where you can walk or cycle to work or shop. So blueprints for heart-healthy suburbs may already be on the desk of planners. None of this, of course, would be possible without devoted volunteers and fundraisers. Their outstanding performance makes this work of the Heart and Stroke Foundation possible. Our volunteers come in all ages and from every imaginable background. It is the Heart and Stroke Foundation of history, an outstanding history of education, information, research, and public service which makes me a proud volunteer within the organization. But it is because of my son Elliot that I am so committed to the foundation and its cause. Elliot was born on April 5th, 2006. In the midst of our joy, my husband and I were given the devastating news that our perfect little boy was born with multiple congenital heart defects. Elliot underwent a life-saving procedure at Toronto's Hospital for Sick Children at 10 days old. It is one of many that he will undergo in his lifetime. Like many new mothers, I had been interested in researching everything related to my new baby: the best diaper cream, the best stroller, the best baby detergent. But now, included in this list, I began to research heart disease, heart defects, and its effects on Canadians. I wanted to know if anybody was out there speaking on behalf of Elliot and other babies and adults living with congenital heart defects. I wanted to know if anybody was raising awareness, or if anybody was making a difference. And I wanted to be a part of it. It was this research that led me straight to the door of the Heart and Stroke Foundation. I am extremely indebted to the volunteers at the Heart and Stroke Foundation, who have devoted their time, effort, and money to its cause so selflessly. I am thankful every time I see my son smile, and I envision his bright and long future. Those first few days following Elliot's diagnosis, as a new parent to a child with multiple heart defects, were extremely scary and lonely. The Heart and Stroke Foundation, and especially its volunteers, are a continuous source of comfort and support, both on a personal and a grand scale. 70% of all Canadians are affected by heart disease and stroke, and there are many people in Niagara Falls that have a story to tell, and we want to hear their stories. They can make a difference in Niagara Falls by sharing their stories with others and putting their hearts into it. February is heart month. Our goal is to raise $185,000 in Niagara with the help of 24 zone leaders, 122 captains, and 1,500 canvassers. We are looking for two new captains and 20 new canvassers in Niagara Falls. Canvassers give four hours of their time, any time during the month of February, to visit their neighbors while being active. Please contact us to tell us your story. We can reach that 905-938-8800, or by email at mystory@hsf.on.ca. Also, in case we cannot find a canvasser for your street, please prepare your donation and send it to the Heart and Stroke Foundation at 300 Bunting Road, Unit 3, St. Catherine's, Ontario, L2M 7X3, or call our office at 905-938-8800. The Heart and Stroke and Big Bike will be rolling through Niagara Falls on April 25th at Chatters. Teams of 29 riders come together for a fun building experience as they take turns to ride the bike. We are looking for volunteers to help connect with teams in Niagara Falls. If you want to know more about the Heart and Stroke Foundation, please visit our website at www.hardenstroke.ca. Let me thank you for taking the time to listen to this presentation, and let's see what happens if we can work together and put our hearts in it.
Thank you very much, Diana. There may be some questions from members of council. If not, I'd like to have a motion, please, to proclaim February's Heart and Stroke Month, councillor DiDati and councillor Peter Angelo. So moved. Any comments with respect to that motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. And also, to raise the flag, of course, we'll include that same thing, councillor DiDati and councillor Peter Angelo that are right, and all those in agreement, please raise their hands. Thank you very much. So we'll be glad to do that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and appreciate you spreading the word as well. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, ladies and gentlemen, members of council, is report 2007-34, a new four-pad arena complex, the Capital Campaign. We have a recommendation before us, members of council. We do have a representation from, a presentation from Mick Wolf and Don Jackson this evening, but we'd like to deal with the report before the presentation. So, any questions with regard to the recommendation and the report? Councillor Einoni, moved by seconded, okay? Seconded by councillor DiDati. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. I'd like now to welcome, and if I could, Mick Wolf and Don Jackson, along with the recreation committee, those who are here, who will provide an overview of the Great Seat Sale, which is an exciting fundraising campaign to support our new four-pad arena. Welcome, Don.
Your worship, Mayor Salsi, councillors, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My part of the remarks will be quite brief. Most of you were absent from the volunteer recognition evening due to a very pressing engagement. I know you would have been there otherwise. So we thought it very important to come here and make the pitch to you directly tonight. Once again, I'm very pleased to represent the members of your recreation committee. The shirt still fits? Barely.[1637.41][1637.41](Laughter). And I'm certainly hoping I know we're on the home stretch in this whole project and that I can soon give it a decent burial, the one that it deserves. The committee is extremely pleased to reaffirm our support for the decision taken by this council some time ago now in approving the development of a four-pad arena complex for the citizens of our community. This new complex will truly be a facility that will make Niagara Falls the envy of all similar-sized communities in this whole province. The aim of our committee is to make a difference by meeting the recreation-related needs of the citizens of this community. We were proud to offer our fundraising assistance some time ago, a year and a half or more ago, when discussions first began concerning the type of new arena facilities that we were going to have in this community. I'm here tonight to do one thing: to assure you of the committee's continuing support for the Capital Campaign that has been proposed and has been accepted by you, and to reaffirm our pledge to take a leadership role with the fundraising required to build this facility. We are especially proud that one of our own committee members, Mick Wolf, has committed himself to lead this campaign. And that's my segue to introduce Mick.
Thank you, Don. Your worship, Mayor Salsi, council and staff, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure today to provide a very brief presentation on what we already know to be a great news story. Today represents official relaunch, 20 months later, of the Capital fundraising campaign for the new four-pad arena complex. As chair of the original fundraising committee, I'm delighted to reengage the community in what is one of the most exciting projects in the history of Niagara Falls. Staff presented a recommendation and council tonight approved the values for the naming rights for our campaign for the various arena properties, as well as the Great Seat Sale, which I will outline in some detail. The combined values for which, at the community level, we will be raising over $1 million, excluding the overall building name, which will be for a larger amount again. You will see this great seat- You will see this Great Seat Sale brochure at all key city locations, including the existing arenas in McBain Centre, as well as our committee being out at various city and community events. We hope to be the first arena in not only Canada but the world to have every single spectator seat sponsored by donation with a name plaque on it. We're particularly excited about our "In the Pink" section of seats, and you can see this pink seat here before Mayor Salsi. $50 from each of the $250 that would be pledged for each of these seats will be donated to the Greater Niagara General Hospital Foundation for Cancer Care. And we also have with us tonight Mike Summerhill from the GNGH Foundation, Executive Director, if you have any questions about that. All of us, or virtually all of us, have been affected on one way or another by this terrible disease. And the flags on these seats will serve as a wonderful memorial for any cancer victim that we may know in our family or friends, or also the name of someone who's doing their part in a preventative way or for early diagnosis. Donors will receive a taxable receipt for the full amount of the donation for these or any other seats, including the VIP seats, which are $500, or the regular seats, which are $200. This could be used as a wonderful Christmas gift, and the seat dedication will live on for the life of this facility. I lost my own mother to cancer when I was 10 years old, and have already pledged a pink seat in her memory in the new arena. I encourage each of you and every citizen and business in this city to take opportunity of this great community project. Fledged forms are available, as I mentioned, at every city location and can be returned to the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Department at the McBain Centre. Over the coming months, myself, along with the campaign task force, will be canvassing the community to support all the naming opportunities and the seat sale, and we will achieve our goal. And sincerely thank you, the council, for having the vision and making this community project a reality. And I do have seat sale brochures, pledge forms for each of you this evening.
Great, Mick. We do have them as well. I know there's a member, members of council would like to maybe ask some questions. I have a request, I've got three, that I'd like to request from you as well. I know they're moving well already, I understand.
There are over 30, in just a brief time, tonight's the official relaunch, we have over $30,000 in seats that pledge donations. And in the brief time that we did the fundraise before, there were in excess of $400,000 in pledges for the naming opportunities.
Great. We have some questions, members of council. Councillor DiDatti?
Yes, your worship. First, it's a question through the staff. In regard to the seat sales, I know in Niagara Falls Arena, we purchased those seats from another arena in the US, I believe, at one time. They're still in decent shape, and I just wondered, gates that arenas could probably use on. Have we tried marketing? Are people out there?
We've already been contacted. The Mayor of St. Catharines contacted us last week, and thank you for your inquiry. We did advise him through our CAO that when we decide the disposition of what's going to happen to that facility, then we can make that point, and towns will have a chance to decide what future that would, those seats would hold. So thank you for bringing that forward.
That's great. And as a fellow member of the Recreation Committee, I thought it would be fitting that I knew the, um, for the seats.
That's great.
And I do know what you guys are doing.
Likewise, I'd like to join with Councillor DiDatti and present to you Mick and Don and Michael as well, my check. And once again, I'd like to encourage members of council and staff to do the same. We do appreciate the efforts of the volunteers we have here before us. Councillor Maves?
Does that mean we have two more seats for them?
There you go. Terrific.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
We're off to a great start.
Councillor DiDatti?
I think it'd be a great idea that we put a challenge out there to our fellow councillors to get the ball rolling and see how many seats, how fast we can sell this out. Mick, did you mention the idea about the record that you're achieving, you're aiming to achieve, the Guinness Record?
We hope to be Guinness World Records at having every single one sold. We hope to do it in six months, to be honest, and these pink seats are growing really fast.
Great. And on behalf of members of council, again, Mick and Don and the entire committee, we do appreciate your efforts prior and also now as well. So thank you very much for your commitment to this worthwhile project and to the foundation, the Hospital Foundation. We look forward to the benefit they'll receive as well. So Michael, thank you for being here as well. The next item on the agenda, members of council, the Niagara Girls' Home for Stock Report has been lifted, so we'll see that at a later date. And the next item, I'd like to introduce, have it, Councillor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I got approached by this item, and I'm going to ask some basic questions. It could go into committee, the whole item, if you wanted to go later. I don't mind that, but I was asked some questions about this by one of the bidders during the week, actually, two weeks ago. And everything was supposed to be according to the policies. Talked with the Director of Parks and Rec during the week. Everything seemed to be fine now. It's been pulled. My only concern now is, and I've been involved in the procedure for tendering for many years and know the bonding process and what has to be done. Is somebody going to tell us, why does this have to be re-tendered all over again? If there's any problems or discrepancies, you toss out the one that doesn't comply and you deal with the bidding process? Can somebody tell me what's going on with this?
Mr. McDonald, do you know who, how my question? Mr. Beeman? Thank you, Mr. Beeman.
Well, let's start at the first place. We start at the beginning. This process is a request for proposals, not a tendering process. There is a wide degree of discretion reserved to the municipality, which places the process in this, in this particular situation. The, in a tendering process, the failure to provide a, what we call a commitment to bond is fatal. It's fatal. I agree. This is an RFP. There is a specific reservation in the process here to allow the municipality to waive that requirement, which is done in this case. And right up until recently, that was appropriate. When it came down to this point, where a report was put on staff and recommendations being made, I was not prepared, as the solicitor advising this council, to recommend that a bylaw go forward authorizing a contract with a party that had not been able to get a commitment to bond. And right up until Friday of last week, they were unable to do so. That being the case, I recommended the tender be pulled, or the request for proposals be The next decision is what to do about that. The party that finished second currently is not recommended to council. So that, we don't have a report that actually recommends them. Secondly, it was clear that during the course of this process, information which is not meant to be shared between the parties that are, that are making proposals had been shared. I don't know how this happened, and I don't have investigated it, I only found out about it recently. But certainly, in a process that's meant to be where we make commitments, that the information that comes from each of the proposal members not exchanged with others, and it is available to the others, that gives me concern as to the fairness of the process. The only way I can see that being corrected is to start again. So that is what I've recommended.
I think we're, I think we better have a full report and discussion to council on this before you proceed. There's like $680 difference in an $800,000 contract, and I think that it's appropriate the council be fully briefed, and I wanted some basic questions just to put the brakes on with respect to this, so everybody knows where we're going. There are already solicitors involved, obviously, from the correspondence we've received.
Those solicitors are not here because I advised them that this matter, that I would be recommending that this matter go be set out again, and we start again. That is the reason why they are not here.
Well, I think they were here because it was being deferred. I don't, did you?
No, sir. It is very clear, my correspondent, Ed Richardson, it's absolutely clear, he has no expectation this matter will be deferred. None at all.
Well, I think we should have some correspondence and discussion in committee with respect to this matter.
Mr. McDonald?
The staff hasn't had a chance to really vet this out either, and we will be dealing with, and we will bring it back to council, so.
Okay. Councillor Anoni?
I'm sorry, for that whole thing, did I understand that we're re-tendering it rather than going to the next bidder down? Because wouldn't we just go to the next bidder? Because that's just common sense, isn't it?
Yeah, that decision hasn't been made. I think a solicitor is pointing out what his preferences at this point. Staff haven't had a chance to vet this or discuss it, and we'll come back with consideration for that.
So we aren't automatically going to re-tender?
There's no formal recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the clerk to, just the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to adjust the zoning boundary to reflect proposed lot lines and recognize the recent variance at the addresses of 5205 Fourth Avenue and 5138 Rosedale Drive. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, October 26, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
At this time, I'd like to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hilevich?
Your worship, yes, this application involves two properties. One is the former St. Stephen's Church on Fourth Avenue, and the other is a residential property on Rosedale Drive. The application is to facilitate a severance that recently went through the Committee of Adjustment to convey a portion of the lands behind the former church building to the owner of the property on Rosedale Drive. The lands are, two parcels as outlined on the location map, one of the larger property at the corner of Fourth and McCray, and the residential property on Rosedale Drive, zone in the vicinity of the Even Ty home. The lands are designated in the official plan. Just going to do some background first. The, the request, as I was outlining, is to accommodate the severance that was recently at the Committee of Adjustment. Council will recall that a few years ago, the former St. Stephen's Church was rezoned from a residential R2 zone to a site-specific zone to allow for conversion of the church building to be a dwelling and a martial arts studio. The house on Fourth Avenue has been part of this severance, and the lands need to be rezoned because the St. Stephen's Church lands are site-specific to the particular application. Go to the next slide, you can see that there's a small area of land that's designated with the red crosshatching. This is 87 square meters of property, less than 1,000 square feet, that's being conveyed to the property on Rosedale Drive. It has been maintained by the owner of Rosedale Drive for some time. So all of those lands that are outlined in pink or red, depending on your screen, that the crosshatch lands will be zoned R2. All of the lands outlined in yellow will be zoned R2 with a special provision to recognize the martial arts studio and to incorporate two variances that were given by the Committee of Adjustment. One is for the floor area of that martial arts studio, and the second variant was to allow a garage to be also constructed on that property, already in existence. The official plan designates the property as residential. The residential designation also permits compatible ancillary uses, therefore, there's no conflict with the official plan. The zoning is, will consolidate the residential property in Rosedale to an R2 zone. The R2 special provision for the former church, the martial arts studio and residence will also be incorporated. There's no change in any of the standards, and so therefore, the bylaw can be supported, or bylaw amendment can be supported. And staff is therefore recommending that council proceed with the zone change, which will recognize the adjustment of zone boundaries as the highlights of this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilevich. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here present who'd like to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to proposed bylaw amendment? No? Okay. At this time, then, council will hear from the applicant or his representative? Are you Mrs. Barnes?
No, I'm Anne Ellis, I'm Harold Barnes's daughter.
Okay. Are you representing the owners?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you very much, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Salsi, and members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anne Ellis. I am here this evening on behalf of my parents, Harold and Elmo Barnes. They have been granted a property severance from 5205 Fourth Avenue, and now request a zoning bylaw amendment with respect to the property they own at 5138 Rosedale Drive. They have resided at this address for 51 years. During these years, this piece of property located on the southeast corner of their land, and shown as Part 1 on a sketch, had been fenced, landscaped, and maintained as their own. Harold and Elmo would like to have this piece of property joined to their original parcel, so the aesthetics of the property at 5138 Rosedale Drive will be retained, and so the value of the property isn't compromised. Thank you for your consideration.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Are there any questions from members of council with regards to the applicant, the application? Okay. Thank you very much. Having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. With the pleasure of council, Councillor DiDatti, moved by Councillor DiDatti, seconded by Councillor Thompson. Any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Once again, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider amendments to the cultural heritage policies of the official plan as proposed through Report PD 2007-94. Notice of a public open house and public meeting was given in accordance with the regulations of the Planning Act and by publishing a notice in the Niagara Falls Review on October 13, 2007. Notice was also sent to certain agencies by prepaid first-class mail on Thursday, October 12, 2007. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan amendment shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Once again, I would ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed amendment to the cultural heritage policies of the official plan. Mr. Hilevich?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, this is a city-initiated amendment. This is part of the 2007 work program for the municipality, and it's part of the requirement under the Planning Act to conduct a review of our official plan policies from time to time, our currently official plan policies in the official plan, and this would be an update to those policies. In addition to being part of our work program, the changes that are coming about because of changes in the Ontario Heritage Act and the provincial policy statements, there's also requirements that municipality comply with these provincial legislative requirements. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we have policies in our official plan, but they haven't been updated since 1991, when they were first introduced. The background, therefore, is to comply with the provincial legislation. We did hold a public open house. This is a requirement under the Act now for official plan amendments. We had about six people from the public attend that public open house. The details of the amendment itself are really just highlights to what is actually going on in terms of very detailed policies. on in terms of very detailed policies. But we already have policies dealing with the Heritage Committee. Heritage Act now allows municipal councils to refer any heritage matter to this committee, not just property matters, as well as outlines our responsibility for maintaining a heritage register of properties of significance to the community. We also have updated the designating criteria. We have criteria right now for districts and individual properties or lands. We have updated those criteria for evaluating, assessing, and serving the land. We're also introducing new criteria for cultural heritage landscapes. This again would allow for the evaluation, assessment, and conservation of those properties if council so choose to work with those policies. The provincial Act has also changed with respect to heritage conservation districts. We don't have any in Niagara Falls, but this is again permissive legislation, permits the council to do it if they wish. But in order to have a heritage district, we first must establish a study area. We must do that by bylaws, this is outlining what the responsibilities are of the municipality. It also would provide that a heritage conservation plan be prepared at the termination of that study, so that everybody would be fully aware of their responsibilities. And last but not least, it also would empower council to pass bylaws that would prohibit building, erection, or demolition that didn't comply with that plan. The further amendments also proposed include the protection of archaeological sites. A few years ago, the city carried out a heritage master plan. That master plan identified a number of archaeological sites, and this would require that any development that would occur on or near those lands would be subject to preparing an archaeological step before that development occurs. Policies would also allow the municipality to adopt guidelines that might help preserve heritage features within the municipality. Again, this is permissive. We'd also, this is a new change coming out of the provincial Act, that any development that would be next to a heritage resort, heritage resort being any of those properties in that register, so those are designated and recognized or listed properties. Again, the developer would be required to submit a heritage impact assessment as part of his development requirements. We're following the provincial requirements on that. The city already has a policy dealing with municipal heritage policies. We're updating that again to just reflect current standards regarding conservation, maintenance, and restoration of heritage properties. As well, then, we're also providing that an appendix be included into the official plan. It does not form part of the official plan, but it does list possible heritage districts. This again was taken from the work done by the city as part of its heritage master plan. And two last areas that are being addressed in this Amendment 74 provide for some alternative protection. One would be the use of the Property Standards Bylaw. We would have to go through the public process and adoption of the bylaw if the city so chooses, but this would allow the council to address, excuse me, more specifically, the retention of heritage features for properties that would come under the Property Standards and Maintenance Bylaw requirements. As well, it would allow the city to pass some alternative measures to designations, so rather than just relying on designation, we could use site-specific zoning or conservation easements to secure certain heritage rights. And then the last area is to add new definitions, which will help with the interpretation of the official plan policies. So therefore, in conclusion, we're making these changes to comply with the provincial level of requirements. Due to the number of text changes that were done to this document, we're actually recommending that the entire section be removed and replaced with Amendment 74, which is in your council package. So we're recommending that council adopt Amendment Number 74, because it is a text change that affects the whole of municipality, that must go to the region for regional approval. And we're asking for the authorization from our council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result, the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed amendments to the cultural heritage policies. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the amendments to those cultural heritage policies? Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the amendments on the cultural heritage policies? If not, then I'm going to request any questions from members of council for clarification. If not, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed amendments to the cultural heritage policies is now concluded, and does the council wish to make a motion on the official plan amendments proposed through the planning report PD 2007-96? Counselor Wing. Moved the recommendations, seconded by Counselor Iannone. Any further discussion or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you very much.
Members of council, I have a few comments this evening. I'd like to extend my condolences to the family of Jessica Ruddle, of our clerk's department, who mourns a loss to her young, one-month-old niece, Sam Elizabeth Ruddle. Sam was also the granddaughter of Barney Ruddle, our former assistant chief of the City of Niagara Falls Fire Department. Our heartfelt thoughts are with the members of your family, through the members of council and city staff. On a positive note, I'm pleased to offer congratulations to Mr. Tom Vickery on his recent retirement. His last day working with the city was on November 16, and he started at the city in Niagara Falls as a temporary laborer in the sanitation department on August 21, 1973. In 1983, he became a full-time employee, spending most of his career in parks and arenas. He has worked as a supervisor in our Parks Division from 2003 up until his retirement this month. Congratulations to Tom, we wish him all the best. I'd also like to mention a special donation that was made this week. Counselor Vince Carrio made a generous donation of new mattresses to Nova House and the Hope Furniture Bank. And through his company, Niagara Hospitality Hotels, Counselor Carrio had a number of unneeded new double mattresses and made a discreet donation to these worthy charities in Niagara. The mattresses were delivered two weeks ago, and thank you to Counselor Carrio for reaching out to our community. Thank you very much. There have been some important events in our community recently I'd like to acknowledge as well. The Optimus Club honored the exceptional youth contributions to our city during their Youth Appreciation Awards last Tuesday evening. I was pleased to greet this group of outstanding young people to help recognize their achievements in our community. On Thursday morning, we held an Alzheimer's coffee break at the Municipal Center, which was very well attended. We'd like to thank the men and women at the Service Center for our collective contribution of $200 for Alzheimer's research and support services. I'd also like to acknowledge as well, and to thank Mr. Ross Barone of Portage Bakery, Mr. Lou Morocco of New York Style Deli, and Tom Newell of Tim Hortons McLeod Road for their contributions and support of this initiative. On Friday, November 23, I was pleased to be able to attend the final United Way luncheon for this year's campaign, where Casino Niagara and their associates made an extremely generous contribution of $300,000 to the 2007 United Way campaign. So I'd like to thank the associates at Casino Niagara and Casino Niagara Cares for that generous contribution. Youth success were also highlighted in the Ontario Secondary School Business Plan Competition Awards this past Saturday. It was a pleasure to attend and to acknowledge our young entrepreneurs on the good work they're doing here in Niagara. Just to point out that the local participant received the overall provincial number-one award, so we're very pleased that this was put on by the Ministry of Business, I believe, and I was really satisfied and quite satisfied that the recipients were local people and very, very deserving award to them. Yesterday marked the 20th anniversary of the Niagara Men's Chorus. They celebrated a performance at St. Andrews United Church. On behalf of the members of council, I wish to congratulate this talented group of singers and offer best wishes for many more successful years of entertaining Niagara. I'd also like to bring up some upcoming events to the attention of residents and council. Angels Everywhere is a first-time event being held as part of our efforts in the Winter Lights competition. Angels Everywhere includes entertainment by youth choir, dancing, and angels in art and popular culture. It will be held in the Lomarch Room of the Niagara Falls Public Library tomorrow evening from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and is a free event. Donations would be accepted as well for Project Share. Winter Lights judges will be in Niagara Falls beginning December 8. And because of our past success as the winners of the competition for cities of more than 50,000, we are now competing in the winner's circle area of competitors. The Winter Lights Committee has organized an even more exciting lineup of events this year. A free community pancake breakfast will be held on Saturday, December 8, at St. Patrick's Hall on Victoria Avenue from 9:00 a.m. till noon. Judges will be hosted at a welcoming reception on December 9 at the Falls Mary Hotel, and we wish the Winter Lights Committee the best of luck in this year's competition and trust that our city's efforts will once again be well received. And the annual Winter Festival of Lights Cheerleading Competition will be held this weekend in our city. The 24th Annual Event opens on Saturday at the Niagara Falls Memorial Arena. Thank you very much. Under Communications and Comments of the City Clerk, the first item is Action Niagara requesting municipal sponsorship for the upcoming Action Niagara Conference, the Rise of the Creative Class lead for Niagara Falls in January 2008. A recommendation of council. Yes, Counselor Di Addati?
Yes, your worship. I just had a thought on that one. I went onto the website, and it's $150 to register as a delegate. I think it's a very worthwhile thing to be at, but I thought our money would be better spent. I mean, we could pay for, you know, all of council to attend for, you know, a fraction of the cost of renting a booth or sponsoring, and I just wondered what the logic was. I know they said we could be there to promote the city and whatnot, but I mean, how much are we going to be promoting the city within the city at a city hotel? And I thought to myself, it would make more sense if we made money available for the council to attend this seminar when this gentleman comes to town, because he is well-known, he's well-documented, and I think it's timely, especially with what's going on and what we're trying to do in our downtown, that we attend and get something from it. I think we'll get a lot more out of it if we were to attend, and I would make the motion, your worship, that if members of this council wanted to attend, that we cover that house.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Di Addati, seconded by Counselor Iannone. Counselor Carrio?
I'll support the motion, your worship. And as you're aware, or as you see in the report, the region is already donating $25,000 to the event, so the taxpayers of Niagara Falls are donating, the region's giving them $25,000. So I like Alderman Di Addati's idea, we'll attend the conference, and we are giving money through the region.
Good. Okay, so noted, thank you. Any other comments? Having seen none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. The next item, number two, has been pulled, it's the Festival of Lights Cheerleading, requesting an early bus rate, that's been changed and amended. So, Mr. Clerk, additional items, please?
Yeah, just on that, the bus one, there's been something worked out, and it's in your package for information, but there's no need to make a motion on it. There is an additional planning report that was given to you earlier this evening, PD 2007-103, Warren Woods Draft Plan of Subdivision. I'll maybe let Mr. Hurlovich give some background on that. Just a couple of things related to that. Number one, the, there was a slight, you were given this before the meeting, but then there was also a slight modification made on page two, which was also handed out to you just after Community Services, it just added an additional opening introductory comment with the additional condition for draft approval. Also, it would be necessary for council to pass the attached resolution, which is basically council indicating that the changes are minor in nature and therefore no further notices required, so you have to do that as well as considering the report.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you like to report first?
No, you'd have to do the resolution first, but you may want to get some background from Mr. Hurlovich first before you make those decisions.
Mr. Hurlovich, your comments, please?
Excuse me, thank you, your worship. This report involves the subdivision application known as Warren Woods. It was before this council on October 15. It involves a subdivision development and rezoning for 300 residential units. As part of that draft approval, there were a list of conditions that the developer must fulfill before he can go forward with registration. There was one condition that was objected to by SciTech, which was known as Condition Number 10. Condition Number 10 required that a block of land or a lot, one of the lots within the subdivision plan be dedicated to the municipality as a temporary measure to afford a road connection to the south if in the future the industrial lands were changed to residential. SciTech being an industrial property objected to that condition. They've appealed the conditions then to the Ontario Municipal Board, and we have until Thursday of this week to send that to the board. However, in working with the developer and SciTech, we have come to the conclusion that there are sufficient safeguards within the phasing schedule of this Warren Woods subdivision that we would be able to secure any roadway or road dedication should the lands be part of a future official plan change. So therefore, we are in agreement that Condition 10 could be deleted from the list of conditions, so that's the first modification. The second modification is that the industrial operator would like to have a notice placed in the subdivision agreement, and that notice would also appear in any sales contact or any house that would be in that particular subdivision. And the notice basically says, this is to make you aware that SciTech is an industrial operator working in, operating in the area, and the fact that they operate a manufacturing plant, but they also do so in accordance with the Canadian Chemical Producers Association Care Agreement, and it's basically, it's not a warning clause, it's actually a notice. And the developer is agreeable to have that notice attached to each of the residential properties, and therefore we're willing to accommodate that. If council therefore accepts these two modifications, the deletion of one condition, the addition of another condition, the appellant, the SciTech is willing to withdraw its appeal. If they withdraw their appeal by Thursday, the city is not obligated under the Planning Act to forward that to the Ontario Municipal Board, and everybody should be able to proceed with phasing of the development in accordance with the municipal legislation. This is brought to you at the last moment, and I apologize for that, but it's really trying to avoid going to an Ontario Municipal Board hearing, which is costly, not only for the applicant, the appellant, but the municipality as well. We believe this is a fair and adequate resolution, so we're looking for council's endorsement of those two changes that I outlined. We will be drafting the bylaw in the near future, and we'll be consulting with SciTech as part of that residential bylaw, and as the clerk has outlined, we will need the adoption of a resolution confirming that these changes are minor in nature.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. So I have the request to move the resolution first by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any discussion to that? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Now, Mr. Clerk, we'll move the, we'll move the item then, on the report, the recommendations, is that correct? Okay. Moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Jim Di Addati. Any comments further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you very much. We have reports next, ratification of Community Services Committee actions. I'll call on Chair, Counselor Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of November 12, 2007, be deferred. That MW 2007-131 Railway Grade Separation Class Environmental Assessment Presentation by Dillon Consulting. One, that the environmental study report for the Railway Grade Separation Municipal Class Environmental Assessment be received and approved, and that staff be directed to file the environmental study report and advertise the notice of study completion with the implementation of the capital works in accordance with the requirements of the EA process. B 2007-33, the AG Bridge Park Site for the proposed Boys and Girls Club update, and that the required public meeting under the Planning Act be initiated for the rezoning of AG Bridge Park from residential R1C to open space OS to allow the proposed new Boys and Girls Club at this site. C TS 2007-11, Woodbine Street Traffic Calming Review. One, that this report be received for the information of city council, and two, that the installation of the proposed new stop signs at Woodbine Street and Baldwin Avenue and at Woodbine Street in Belfast be reaffirmed. Three, new business, staff prepare report on the use of a deputy mayor for the city, and four, adjournment and ISO move.
So moved by Counselor Fisher. Any further discussions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Ratification of in-camera recommendations. Clerk?
One item that requires ratification, there's a recommendation that council reconfirm legal counsel defending the corporation against the development charges appealed before the Ontario Municipal Board.
Okay. And request to approve the ratification, moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Maves. Maves. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Right? Abstention, yes, conflict are noted, are noted earlier, thank you. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items where you wish to have any of those removed? Councillor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question on the schedule, council 2008 schedule.
Yes.
Notice there's three meetings in, in March, the month of March. My, just my question for, I know this is only one of Trevor, why, why, why could we not get that other one into February? Well, there's three meetings in March.
Mr. Clerk, can you answer that question?
If you look at the schedule, we try to stick to a bi-weekly schedule. We now have a new holiday in February, which is Family Day. We could have a meeting instead on February 25th. We traditionally don't schedule during Ontario Good Roads, although in the last few years, no one from this council's gone to Ontario Good Roads. So if you want to do that, we could shift maybe the March 3 meeting to February 25th.
I would think that would be better.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion out of effect, councillor Carrion?
Yes.
Moved by councillor Carrion?
Yes.
Seconded by?
Meeting to February.
Councillor Diodati? Okay. Further discussion?
I was going to suggest, your worship, that we have one meeting in June or one in July. We already have, we have one in August during the summer months.
You want to address the first one in February, then you want to talk about March, don't you? Because you mentioned three in March.
Yeah, well, one taken out of March is moved into February.
So, so we'll take, take out the third?
Yes.
Is that correct?
I think that was covered in the first motion.
Okay. All right, let's deal with that motion first. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. And the next item?
And the next item, your worship, is we have, we had talked about going on to a summer schedule and having one meeting a month during the summer months, but I see that in June and July, there's, there's two meetings. And I think, your worship, that it's difficult, we can always add a meeting, but it's difficult for members of the public and, and the taxpayers to cancel all of a meeting. I think it's easier if we have the one meeting scheduled each month in the summer, and if we have to have another meeting, your worship, we, we put it back in. But what happens if we have the schedule, inherently someone books something for one of those meetings, and then it's very awkward to try and take it out of the schedule, your worship. We end up during some of those meetings, just filling up those meetings. I, I move that we have one meeting in June, one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
Okay. You want to give us specific dates or would you like to leave that to the clerk?
I'll leave that to the clerk. One meeting in each one of those three, seven months.
Okay. Seconded by councillor Thompson. Okay, any comments further? Yes, councillor Wing?
I'm sorry, I can't support the motion. I remember when we used to meet only once per month in the summer, and those meetings were very, very long. I'd rather meet a little more frequently, have a little bit shorter meetings, give the public more opportunities to keep the rest of us happening.
Anybody else wish to make comment? Councillor Anone?
I have to, oh, councillor Wing, I mean, we, when we do the one meeting in the summer, half the time we're here from four o'clock when we get here. Sometimes we're going past 11 into 12 because you have so many planning matters or whatever you're carrying over. You know, if, if you're not, we've pulled meetings before, but I think reducing the schedule to once, once in the summer months is too, I think it makes those meetings too endless.
We could give permission for you two to stay on Castle Road.
Yeah, see, we don't mind coming in twice a month in the summer.
We have a motion on the four members of council. Anybody else wish to make comments? We'll call the vote then. All those in favor? One, two, three, four opposed? One, two, three, four. I guess I'll break the tie. We'll keep it as it is then. Okay? And perhaps councillor Carrion, we could?
That's fine, worship. The jury will.
Yes, we could possibly make, maybe the possibility, we could make the staff aware as we anticipate the summer months that if there isn't going to be any business to be scheduled, we may delete that meeting. Okay, so, okay. Thank you. Any other items on the consent agenda? If not, motion to approve the consent. Yes, councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. Any comments or questions, councillor Thompson?
Yes, I wonder if we could ask Mr. Drin to come in with some kind of a policy with respect to the transit requests. We're getting these almost on a bi-weekly basis now, and I think that there are many that could be dealt with by staff, some kind of a cost sharing and with an appropriate nonprofit agency. There are some that are appropriate at Christmas time where we provide the service. I don't have any problem with the ones that are there, but I think we could eliminate doing that by having a policy that would give the staff the opportunity to suggest cost sharing rather than the municipality taking the hit all the time.
Mr. Clerk, you wish to address that?
There's already been a motion on that from this council, and staff's aware of it, and I think Mr. Drin can comment further. There is a review that's taking place, and I think those issues will be addressed by that.
Thank you. So we do have the motion on the four members of council. All those in favor? Motion's carried, and I say, thank you very much. Next item is the drainage matter with regard to Union Marsh, 2007-19. First of all, council would like to approve the report and the, to give the bylaw the third reading. Moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Mr. Clerk? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried, one abstention, correct, thank you.
So bylaw 2007-174 has been read a third time.
And under property matters, we have a matter with regard to surplus property and conveyance of a laneway between Dyson Avenue and Muir Avenue. Is there anyone present with respect to these properties? Anybody present tonight with respect to the laneway in Dyson Avenue and Muir Avenue? Okay? If not, we have a report. Councillor Carrion, I'm sorry, councillor Thompson, move the report. Councillor Carrion, you're seconding that? Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to elicit this evening?
No, your worship.
Okay, then can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaws are given a first reading. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. Okay. You've heard the motion, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Bylaws 2007-242 to 2007-247 read a first time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Councillor Peter Angelo and councillor Maves. You've heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2007-242 to 2007-247 read a second and third time and passed.
Okay. Any new businesses this evening? Councillor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. I just take a minute to talk a little bit about something that I need some help from our council on. Our main industry, the Niagara Falls tourism, tourism industry is facing some tough challenges this year. As you're aware, 86%, of the market comes by car. Gas prices are at an all-time high. Exchange rate is discouraging US visitation, which is already in decline, and encouraging Canadians to go to the US. This also is an election year in the US, which never favors tourism in our municipality. As you're aware, your worship, there's, there's not a lot of industry left in our municipality. Unfortunately, we have tourism, that's all we have. So we're always looking for things that we can do to help our industry. There's not a lot that we can do as a city council, but there is one thing that I think we can do to make a difference in our industry. There seems to be a huge pent-up demand from the Chinese market to visit Canada, except there is a problem that China and Canada do not have approved destination status. Sure you some, see some Chinese visitors here, these people are on special technical visas and are only available to a very small few of the elite. There are 132 countries that the Chinese government will allow their citizens to visit. Canada is not yet one of them. The United States will have it by year's end. The Canadian government was in advanced negotiations with the Chinese government to get an ADS status, but this came to a screeching halt, went along with any other important new forms of trade for Canada. Prime Minister criticized the Chinese for their international social affairs rather than focus on our trade. We need to get Canada back on track with this negotiation. Derek Galpin, China manager for the Canadian Tourist Commission predicts that if Canada and China get ADS status, Canada could see as many as 2 million visitors in the first year. That is four times more than we have in Japanese visitation right now. Niagara needs this business in the next coming up years. I'd like to make a motion, your worship, that we send a letter to Stephen Harper and the Canadian Tourist Commission Chairman and Tourism Ontario, that we need to get the approved destination status to China. I'd also like to see us take the lead on this. And the way that we would take the lead on this is the same way that we did with the two casino issue. We formed a committee, get some interested councillors to sit on the committee. I have an interest in, from the Parks Commission, that they would like to participate. We have interest in, from some of the other tourist operators, that they would participate. But I think we need to take the bull by the horns and, and take the initiative. There's no one pushing this. So along with that motion, your worship, I'd also like to see the city take the lead, form a committee, get some others involved. We need to put the, crank up the heat on the government to, to get this moving again. It's one of the very few things that we can do as a city and as a council to help our own industry, your worship. That will be my motion.
Thank you, councillor Carrion. You're seconding the motion. Councillor Anone?
I'll second that and I'll nominate councillor Carrion to sit on the committee. He is the most informed on this, he's, he's the most informed on this council in regards to what we need. I didn't even know that. A slip of our prime minister's tongue took us off the approved destination, recommended destination. I'm confused.
Yes, not quite.
It was, it was something that was done by our government. We were very close to getting the ADS status approved. Something was done. The, the negotiations, the negotiations came to a complete stop, and now we are in the bottom of the pack, or at the bottom of the list of countries that are awaiting the ADS status.
Councillor Carrion, it's a great, great idea, and I think I should just add a little bit more to it. We have a diplomatic matter where there's a fugitive that's under house arrest in Vancouver, who was actually arrested here in Niagara Falls. He's wanted by the mainland government, the mainland Chinese government, and he has yet to be deported back to mainland China. And my understanding, and dealing with this matter a few years ago, or a year ago, was that we're awaiting the ADS, and this is one of the matters that's holding up this issue, that we're concerned that this fugitive, when he is, if he is released back to mainland China, that may ease the tension between our two countries. As councillor Carrion points out very well, at any given time, mainland China has about 35 million people on the move, and it would be nice that we could include Canada as one of their destinations. So I know that the Parks Commission does have a very strong concern, and they have representatives over there on a regular basis. So I appreciate your, your motion. I think it's very timely, and hopefully we can encourage the federal government to come to some conclusion yet. But I understand there's some legal wrangling that's still going on. So we have a motion before us. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Mr. McDonald?
Just, just a quick comment. We have actually, I've given an early Christmas gift tonight. We have the budget binders to, to hand out. We will be planning on having the department presentation begin on December the 10th, and we were hoping you'll get a chance to review those. And if you have any questions, please contact our finance department or the individual directors between now and the 10th. You'll notice at the back of the binders, there are several schedules, and they give kind of a good summary that will help you, I think, if you're focusing on those schedules before you get into the detail of the budget. It will allow you to sort of get to the meat of what you might want. There is a list there on Schedule F that identifies numerous items that were proposed initially in the budget but did not make it into the budget, and so we just want you to pay for the attention of those. Some of them you might want to be discussing a little bit later on. Alderman or councillor Diodati made a request also that we provide a list of items that were in the '07 budget but got taken out or weren't spent, and we can't provide that right now because we just don't have the year-end information. But before the budget process is through, you'll see that it's calculated for in that we estimate a surplus, and you'll notice that in the summaries. So we're assuming it's a certain amount of money. That's very important to us for the '08, but the actual itemized list, we can't provide that right now. But we haven't forgotten it, and we will provide that as well. So as I said, it's going to be a good reading, and we'd be happy to respond to any questions, but we're looking forward to the detail getting into it on the 10th.
Thank you. Any new business? Yes, councillor Diodati?
Yes, your worship. I'm looking forward to that reading. I can, instead of the night before Christmas, I'm going to read that to my kids, so we'll get them to sleep a lot quicker. The, one thing I did want to point out, Sleep Cheap, as you know, starts tonight, and I want to, very grateful to all the hoteliers, including councillor Carrion, that are partaking in this event. It's, so far has been a great success. We still do have approximately 500 rooms available. For anybody that wants to find out where those hotels are and their phone numbers and contact information, they just go to the city's website, which is niagarafalls.ca, and they have time if they haven't already, and they want to surprise their spouse and be a real Lance romance, and book it, make it all happen. And you know what happens after you do something nice like that? Nobody knows. Okay. All right. Anyway, yeah, three kids, that's right. So anyway, I would encourage those that have not already booked to do it now. This is the last chance, and they'll have a great time this week. Thank you, worship.
Thank you again. Yes, councillor Anone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And seeing as we're going to be going into budget time, I think I'll raise the, the topic that was briefly touched on downstairs, and that's Mr. LaRocque's article on the weekend. Everybody read the, the, his opinion column in regards to councils looking for a raise. And I don't know if we would have, I think he's awfully proud of himself, he might have think he pushed this issue, but I'm going to stand up and I'm going to address it. We kind of, we kind of talked about this issue downstairs, and, and the suggestion made in the paper was that some of us would think we would like to have a raise, and quite frankly, I'll be the first to open the discussion because we know how shy I am. I think that we've been doing this job for $19,000 a year for a long time. Janice pointed out what we were making when we started compared to what we're making now, but I'll, and also say that when we went from nine, from 12 to eight, we were the first two people who said, you know what, then you're going to need an increase, you're going to have more work in time, and you're going to need an increase. We got more work, but we didn't get an increase, other than maybe minimal every year. Council found out this year we can no longer tie our increases to the QP contract as it, as it goes along. So everything, anything we do, we're going to have to do in this council chamber, and I think it's better to be a public discussion anyway. The suggestion was made that council would like to be paid at par with the region, so that's the argument. I'm not even going to make an argument, I'm just going to make comments on that from here. Mr. Mayor, downstairs, in regards to conversation we had, you made the comment that you work 60, 80 hours a week, and I have no doubt you do. I have no doubt you're full tilt, full time. But I'd be hard pressed to look around this table and maybe not find one of us who, who are doing probably a minimal of 30 hours a week. I have no problem saying, I know I do a minimal of 30 hours a week. If I were to prorate that over a year, I'm probably making $14 an hour if I'm going to do it at 40 hours a week. I'm not knocking your salary by any means, so this is not being critical. You have a travel allowance that you're able to pay for your car and your mileage with, and you have a contingency that you're able to pay for expenses with, which I don't knock either. We don't have that, and I think we do, I don't, I think you'd be hard pressed to find somebody in this room who doesn't deserve a raise, or doesn't, or doesn't earn, work to earn the raise. And I think when you get into a topic of politician salaries, it gets ugly, it doesn't matter where you're going to go. So tomorrow the front page will be, I know he wants a raise, and the, and the editorial will be critical, or however they're going to take it, but I think it's better we have this debate in a public forum. So we can all make comment, we can all talk about it. I, I do believe I work hard enough to earn a raise. I don't think there's anybody I turn down to help at any given time. You made a comment on you're, you're everywhere. We all try to be everywhere we can if you call a meeting or if there's a public event. I find we're now fighting issues like doctor recruitment and fighting the NHS and trying to retain a police department in our city, or doing Sleep Cheap programs or raising money for charities. Councillor Wing made a comment to me, you know, we can work as hard as we want to, or we can do as little as possible. And I think you'd be hard pressed to find anybody around this table that does as little as possible. We all try to do as much as we can. And, you know, I, take flak, I've, I've never been, been opposed to taking the flak when I deserve it, and I'm sure I will hear from those who do not think council deserves a raise. But I do believe we work as hard as our regional councillors. I think we're in the forefront as much as our regional councillors. And, yeah, I mean, we raise issues, we, we attend public meetings, we're doing on sites. We're going to work just as hard if we don't get an increase. I mean, nobody's going to reduce their workload or, or reduce our commitment to the city. But I'd like to throw it out to other members of council, see what it is that they think and, and whether they believe, maybe we're not on the right track, maybe there'd be a vote and it's, it's going to fail, but maybe throw it out and everybody can stand up and, and really say what they think. I asked our CIO, my question was that if council were to be paid at par with the regional council, what would an increase of forty-five thousand dollars a year be to the budget? Because that's always what we look at, is dollars and cents. And he said it would be approximately one-tenth of one percent of the entire budget. You know, that's minimal for, I think, the service that this council provides, whether it's seven o'clock in the morning because somebody didn't get their snowplow, or we're shoveling out their driveway, their snowplow, their driveway got shoveled back in, and we're dealing with it then. But I don't think any of us turns down helping anybody. And I clearly believe the only impact would be political, and either you're willing to stand behind what you believe or you're not. And, you know, I might get my rear end kicked for the comments I make, but I think no matter what, this council works very hard, and I'll continue to work as hard if I stay at nineteen seven. But I think that we've come five years since we went from twelve to eight, and I really think we have a heavy workload. And maybe somebody doesn't do thirty hours, but I think you'd find it hard-pressed around this table to find one of us that don't do at least thirty hours a week work. So I'm throwing that out to rest of council, and maybe you'll leave me to hang for tomorrow in the paper, but maybe you could throw out your points of view also.
Perhaps, members of council, you can debate this at Corporate Services. Is that something you ought to do during, during budget deliberation?
You know what, Mr. Mayor? We're going to start our budget deliberations on December seventh, and maybe the motion would be to defer that additional cost to budget deliberations, like the library comes and asks for an increase, we defer it to budget, and we'll find out whether the residents think it's a good idea or a bad idea, whether you have a ton of people show up or less people show up, or I have no problem doing, saying, "If you're going to increase it," and I guess Corey put twenty-three percent, "Give me twenty-three percent more work to do. You know yourself, I'm not shy of doing work. You want to give me more duties, I'll do more duties." But I, I just think that it's, they get a lot, they, they really get their, they're... We do a service provided for nineteen thousand. I think most of us do services provided for more than that. So if anybody else has comments, I'd really appreciate it.
Councillor Cario?
Well, your worship, before we're going to have the debate, I'd like some information at my fingertips to have, some comparables. If we could have some comparables, things to go along with the discussion rather than just have the discussion.